Anybody not ready?
Ready.
Ready.
All right. Good eve- or good afternoon, I guess it is still afternoon. April 18th, it's a little after four. And welcome to this afternoon's Board of Commissioners meeting. And why don't we start with a Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just a couple of ground rules before we get started. I know there's some public comments tonight, so... We've got public comment slips. If you haven't filled one out and you'd like to speak, now's an opportunity to fill one out. I'm guessing everybody here is general comments? No agenda item specific comments? When you- when it is time to make your comment, I'll call your name and ask you to step up to the podium. And then before you make your comment, please state your name and where you live. And you'll have three minutes to make your comment. And there is a timer at the podium. And it'll let you know where you're at in your time. There's a green, yellow, and a red light on it. If you go over your time, I'll just ask you to stop. And please avoid using any profanity. We are recording everything. It is being broadcast. And as always, you don't have to be nice to the three of us, but please be nice to staff. They work very hard to put these meetings on. And we would appreciate it if you could do that. Ted is actually not included in that, so...
There's a target on his back.
Yeah. All right. So that being said, we will move to amendment and approval of the agenda. And I have one amendment.
I do too.
So do I.
Let me pull this pen out here. Okay. Mine is to remove 4D. There is no need for that one.
Okay.
John, what do you have?
Well, you said earlier, the public comments. So we have some folks here that live up to Chetco. And I'd kind of like to add a discussion item if we could. And that would be social security bar. Because they're specifically- and they want to ask questions to Ted. So I didn't know if that was... You know, so I know in public comment, we don't, you know, it's a comment time and you don't really answer questions.
What's the topic of discussion?
So they got a- there's- it's a, I guess, so they live-
Destruction of social security bar.
Destruction of social security bar. And they got- so their deeds, say they have X amount of property from, you know, the center of the road down to the river. And they want to ask Ted if, you know, what, mean water, high water, low water, all that. Is that a-
Do we need to do that in a public meeting? Or can we just?
Well, I'd rather- if I'm going to respond to that, I'd really like to respond to it like looking at a map. Right? And talking to- those are all VSL questions. And if I can get those questions, I'll get the answers for you. And then we'll- then we'll have it lined up.
Can we make appointment to see you one day, like next week? And sit down and try to figure this out?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, let's do that. Just talk to Revia, and she knows where. She knows how to make me show up.
Probably work better one-on-one than in a meeting.
Yeah, I think that- yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
So we'll still have the public comment. So you guys can still get up and kind of give us more detail about what's going on. And then when we're done, we'll set that- we'll set that meeting up for you. Will that- will that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. And then I get to that note earlier that if we could move C, 5C, to the top, it would be appreciated.
So we'll just switch A and C?
Yep, we could.
And I see Dan's here, so we can do that.
I have one, and this would- could be really easy. I was asked for A, if the Board of Commissioners would support a- It's a letter of support for Beacon to be able to go out and receive their state funds for the fiber implementation. And so I created a letter on our letterhead, but I just left it with a chair signing, signing authority to the chair.
Okay.
So it could be something really quick. If you want to put it on discussion action items, I don't think there's going to be too much.
All right. We'll move that to- what's the- what's the last? What's on page two, John?
Nothing.
It'll be D.
Yeah, it'll just be D, 5D.
So we'll put that letter to 5D.
Okay.
All right. Any other changes, Jay?
No.
John?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move approval to the amendment as amended. The agenda as amended, or as amended as the agenda? Yes.
Get all that? I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. So now we'll move to number three, which is general public comments. And Lynn Coker, you have the first slip turned in today.
My name's Lynn Coker. I live in Gold Beach. I want to thank the Board for the opportunity to come today. About 10 days ago, I sent an email to staff concerning allegations in the public square about possible misbehavior by Commissioner Herzog regarding his alleged unauthorized use of county vehicles and his disposal of county property for personal gain. My goal was to achieve a measure of transparency between our county officials and the community at large. As well, I hope to discover a renewed sense of accountability of our elected officials to the county voters. As yet, the county staff has neither acknowledged nor responded to the substance of my email message. In reference to the allegations I cited in my prior email message, I'll point out that the volume of comments and questions in our public square regarding Commissioner Herzog's professional ethics seemed to be increasing. In fact, last week, on April 9th, when I attended a Brookings public meeting in which Commissioner Herzog also attended, a range of questions regarding Commissioner Herzog's professional ethics were brought forth, front and center by the audience. Specific to my comments this afternoon, and I reference in my message to staff, Commissioner was clearly pressed by the audience members on the allegations of his improper use of county vehicles and the disposal of county property for personal gain. To these audience questions, Commissioner Herzog denied any unauthorized use of county vehicles. And he denied the improper disposal of county property. He went on to explain in the public meeting that everything he did was done properly and with the prior knowledge and consent of the County Operations Director, who also was said to be aware of the particulars of the Commissioner's plan of action. Commissioner Herzog went on to expand on this point, and he claimed he did what Ted told him to do. Commissioner Herzog was referring to Operations Director Ted Fitzgerald. I bring these remarks to the BOC meeting this afternoon, hoping once again to achieve a higher level of transparency between our county officials and the community at large. As well, I hope to discover a renewed sense of accountability of our elected officials to the county voters. Toward that end, I look forward to hearing something authoritative regarding the allegations circling within the public square concerning Commissioner Herzog's professional ethics. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this matter.
Right. Thank you, Lynn. Next up on public comment is Ken.
My name is Ken Cunningham. I live at 98650 North Bank, Checkle River Road. And my concern is, I'd like to know what's going on with the county assuming control over the bar, where the park? From what my understanding is, it's a holdup from the city not giving permission for the county to have full control over the bar. So I'd like some answers on that. Other thing is, as a property owner along that section, nobody's following the rules. No law enforcement's writing citations. It's just out of control. And so the property owners are ready to block it off one way or the other. And that's what we wanted to talk to Ted about, where there's no public property beyond social security bar in the high, medium. My property's higher than the high, medium. What is it- how does it, if I block that off, and it's only walk-in only, what ramifications are going to come my way for taking matters into our own hands? Because there's no- all these agencies are pointing to each other. Nobody's taking responsibility for what's going wrong. No citations are being written. And so there's no enforcement going on down there on the bar. And so we looked at the public park being a solution, that there would be a gate open and closed so we wouldn't have people at midnight tearing up the bar, raising heck. You know, you do have all kinds of drug activity going on down there. You have a lot of litter going on down there. And at the meeting we had, the public meeting we had last night in Brookings, it was stated that you guys needed proof. And Gordon, that used to own Stephen's storage, had pictures, license plates, dates, times, and gave it all to you guys, and nothing ever came of it. So we're frustrated with no action taken on what's going on on the social security bar. And that's why we'd like to sit down with Ted to find out what we can do legally, what we can do. And we're not trying to shut off the use of the bar. We're trying to shut off the nonsense on the bar. Walk-in only behind all these houses would be... And you know, I don't understand why they can't post a speed limit. They'd come down there and just roadies all over the place, just tearing up the bar. This is not what this land was. This is supposed to be a wild, scenic river that's not being taken care of. So we're just looking for some help to stop. We're not trying to stop any families, any fishermen. We're just trying to stop the nonsense, the drug activity, the litter. So anyway, looking for answers, and that's where I'm at.
All right. So Ken, we'll set that meeting up with Ted. And then Ted, when you set that up, let me know, and I'll attend the meeting also.
Okay.
Teresa?
It's the same.
Same? So it's what he said? Okay.
I put my name in the same. So hopefully I do it.
Okay. All right.
Try to get that meeting next week. Like I said, I'm here all next week, all the weekend.
Yeah, we can do that. Revia, could you give them a- or maybe we can get them to- If we can give them a piece of paper or something, get their numbers, and then we can coordinate. And we'll contact- we'll reach out to all you guys.
Here. Public comments left.
All right. No further public comments, so consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
So a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. Moving on to number five, discussion action items. And first up is discussion ambulance service. Dan Bratton.
Good evening, good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Bratton with Cal or Lifelight. My counterpart, Joe Gregorio. As some of you may know, we took over Senator Curry ambulance in 1998. 97. We were a lot younger back then. But we've had, I'm sure Ted's had a little chance to go through the orders, several orders over the years. And then in 18, we signed a agreement to take over Port Orford ambulance along with ASA 3 and ASA 2, and had a 10-year extension. This is probably my fault. I didn't think about, think about 10 years. You don't think about past that. But at the time, would have been made sense to put the ability to extend the franchise. We're coming up on about three years left. Less than three years, I guess, in our franchise. And so as we continue to invest in equipment, I sent a email to Ted just regarding some capital expenditures we're going to have. So we would like the ability to modify the ordinances to extend the franchise into the future. And so that's- I can provide more detail if you'd like, but that's basically the request. Each time we've come to the commission, we've got the extensions. But right now, as I understand it, Ted will comment, I'm sure, I don't think the ordinance allows for an extension, so...
Based on my- on what I've seen, it makes a lot of sense. We- it was sort of just kind of bootstrapped along all these years. And modifying it would give them a 10-year extension and then an additional five-year, I believe. And that's just, I mean, they're the operation that's providing the service. They're doing a great job, and we need to support them so that they can continue to invest in that. We're needing more ambulance service, not less, based on what I heard about our demographic in last night's meeting.
If I could, it's a little off-topic, but I think it's on topic. I did want to point out, too, how important fire, law enforcement are to our service. And as I know, you well know Chairman Alcorn from your background, we don't go into scenes that are dangerous. Suicides, unknown medicals, disputes, overdoses. We need law enforcement. And a lot of these do happen between 1:00 and 6:00 in the morning. And so as we think about law enforcement, that's a real concern of ours, not having law enforcement out there during those hours of the early morning. So just an FYI that would have a severe impact, too, on our ability to- we just can't send our crews into scenes that are not safe. And so just for the record, I just wanted to mention that, too.
Yeah, and I know most of those medical calls are unknown. So I know you're staging and standing by and waiting and-
Yeah. And- Each year, there's various incidents across the US where medics are dying the line of duty. And they're to take care of people medically, and they walk into a scene. And you know, we go into some pretty interesting locations at 3:00 in the morning in Curry County, so as you can imagine, so...
Yeah. Yep.
I think all that information is really... We just got to make sure people are aware of the- how everything's all integrated together, all these services.
Ramifications, yeah.
Depends on the other, yeah.
By the way, we did get all the fire chiefs signed a letter supporting our extension. And we worked closely with the fire department over the chiefs last night, and they're all in full support of our thing, our franchise.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's- thank you for the service. It's an easy one to support. Proud to do it and happy to do it, so...
Perfect. So Ted, on the requested motion, it says TBD. Are we motioning to- for the readoption amendments exceptions listed herein?
You would- no, you would motion to- you're basically, what we're going to do here is you're going to approve the amendment of the ambulance service code by instructing me to prepare amendments to the ASA code in order to allow franchise extension without additional amendment to the code. So we're basically, you're going to instruct me, you'd motion to instruct council to modify the code to allow- to allow extensions, additional- to allow extensions without individual amendments to the code.
But also an approval to the code?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll move to approve amendments of the ambulance service code, Article 2, Section 1, and instruct council to prepare amendments to the ASA code in order to allow franchise extensions without additional amendments to the code.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Moving on to our next item, which is the creation of Curry County Road Advisory Committee. Ted, I think that's you.
Yeah, so let me get to that. A road advisory committee is a tool used by local governments to encourage citizen input regarding the county road department's priorities pertaining to road maintenance. The committee would review the county road system and evaluate county priorities. Committee recommendations would be presented to the board for determination on their implementation. The committee would consist of two members each from the north, central, and southern portions of the county. One member from each area would serve a two-year term, and one member from each area would serve a one-year term. And I think that would be- it'll be helpful for the county to define its- the road department's scope and long-term plan, so that we can, you know, see where the residents think that we ought to be investing our money. I know sometimes it seems odd where the county is doing its work. And a lot of times, there's justification for that. But I think more citizen involvement will help get that information out to the public in a clear manner.
And they would be working kind of off of the master plan?
Yeah.
What is it, TSP?
Yeah.
And then identifying, we kind of discussed this in the TSP.
Right.
Identifying more of a local outlook on what really is critical.
Right. I mean, the TSP is a good example of it, because, you know, they're- the traffic safety plan, which is a state mandated plan, is a plan that is- that basically is looking at what's important for traffic and road development throughout the county. And we've been lacking in- lacking in public involvement in that, even though, you know, the way that mechanism is set up, you have open houses once every 10 years, that sort of thing. It's really far and flunked, far- few and far between where you get a chance to talk about this stuff. And a committee is going to keep that conversation going as roads, you know, and especially around here. The roads change a lot. Every winter, they change. So I think it's a- I think as development happens in different new areas and other places might be less developed, those are all things that would impact. And a committee of citizens would be able to get that information to the commission and make sure that the road department is focused on what- where the needs are in the county.
And then the Commissioners would be the appointing body?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'd basically be following the same protocols and rules we do with, like the Budget Committee or any other committee?
Yeah.
And then this committee would be providing recommendations to the BOC?
Correct.
Yeah. Let's- and Ted, will you be the organizer of this committee?
I'll- I'll-
Organizing the meeting?
Yeah, well, the road department would be organizing the meetings and then, you know, basically through my office. So we'll be getting that going. Eventually, it'll be the director of public services who would be overseeing all that.
Because, you know, the- a lot of different local governments can be notorious for a bunch of committees. But then the people who have oversight gets delegated down to be so watered out that no one ever meets.
Right.
And so this is an important one, and we'd like to have- be consistent.
Right.
Well, I'll move to approve the established- to establish a Curry County Road Advisory Committee.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes three to zero. Next up is the- Ted, it's you again, creation of a forestry department.
Okay, so in the, you know, as we've been dealing with the- with the issues of funding our county, as we've looked at neighboring counties and other counties that have been a little bit more successful in generating enough funding to support their needs, we noticed that a lot of these coastal counties have timber departments where they've concentrated lands that were either defaulted to them or otherwise acquired by the county over years and turn those into productive timberlands that are owned by the county. And so, you know, this differs that, you know, when we were talking last night about timber receipts coming off of- from timber generated from government lands, we get a percentage of that, but if that ever happens. But this, in this case, we would get 100% of whatever was generated, because basically, it'll be owned by- it is owned by the county. We have probably a little under 1,000 acres right now of total land that can be deemed to be forestry land one way or another right now. And we can- and by working on with some of the other properties we have, I think I have an idea that we can increase that acreage and start generating a yearly revenue to offset- to offset general fund needs like other counties do. Coos County right now is, I think they have about 17,000 acres, I want to say, that generates them about $3 million of revenue every year that offsets their general fund needs. And we have a long way to go to get there. But this program, it needs to be started. And so you can't ever- you can't ever get anywhere unless you start. So I recommend we start. We have some land we can move into that. We also have some land that's not timberland that we can probably trade for some timberland. I've got some feelers out right now, and that's- and with a little luck, we can convert otherwise unproductive ground that's not generating money into something that will be generating, while relatively small at first. It's a little something's a lot better than nothing.
So number one, I think this is absolutely necessary for the future of the county. You know? The only thing that I would say is that I think for right now, since we don't have the ability to really have a staffed department, that if it's approved, the forestry department falls under the Director of Operations until a point where it can self-sustain it with employees.
And we can contract out what services we need. Right? At this point, it's just basically going to be organizing and reallocating properties into productive timberland.
With maybe a projection to be able to start doing something in the future, like maybe next year?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. So-
And there's no draw on the general fund, so?
No draw on the general fund. This will be a conversion of county property that if sold, if we were to liquidate this property, it would give us, what is it, six cents on the dollar?
Yeah. So if you had 1,000 acres?
Yeah.
If you harvest it all at once, it would be, I mean, depending on- you'd have to have it cruised, but...
Yeah, no, I was just saying that this- the land we have, we have some land that we can trade into timberland.
Oh.
Right now, that is otherwise sitting there not generating revenue. We have a couple of options. We could turn that land into parkland, except a lot of these pieces don't lend themselves to be used as parks. And- or we could sell it. And if we sell- if we sell county-owned property, I believe-
Seven cents on the dollar.
Yes, yeah. Seven cents on the dollar comes back to the general fund. So I think this is a much better use of money for the taxpayers.
Yeah. So there's already been some identified areas that have been put under parks classification that then you would need to reback-
Right.
We would have to reclassify those under the timber program and then move from there.
Correct.
Which I would completely look forward to.
Yeah, makes sense.
So we talked about this a while back, Ted. I don't know if you were here. There's property up Gard- or up Grassy Knob, like 40 acres or something. It's mostly tan oak. But we could go in there and get rid of that tan oak, you know, and chip it or whatever.
And seed it.
And then, yeah, and then plant it and make a little-
Right. And those are- and then, you know, long-term, you've created something. And also, you can't, you know, right now, if there's a piece of timberland that's just only got tan oak on it, that's an actual net liability.
Yeah.
So it's not- so it makes sense to go in and treat it and turn it into something productive so that it can be- it can start generating, you know, just for the county itself. I mean, I was reading some Facebook comments I mean, I, I was reading some Facebook comments on some of the, during the, some of these public meetings, I, I see that there's some fairly misinformed people out there. I, I read one person saying timber industry, that timber industry is no longer a profitable industry. It is and remains the primary industry of, of this part of Oregon and, and there's no end in sight. It's a, it's a very, it's a great industry and, and, you know, having a, having a timber department also, I'd like to be able to use that to, just to, maybe we can use it as, as a way to reach out to encourage people who live in our area to actually stay here and work within that industry. That would also, it's, it's a great, it's a great industry in, in every way.
Just think of Brookings without South Coast number.
Right.
I mean, it's hard to.
Well, you think of the whole county without South Coast number.
Yeah. Exactly.
It's, it's a tough thing to think of.
Well, I'll move to approve the creation of the Curry County Forestry Department.
Second?
So motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes three to zero.
You have page two there. Yep. You can have it.
Yeah. Perfect. All right. So, oh, that's right. D. And that's?
The broadband deployment.
Yeah, that's you, Jay.
Yeah. So I received requests to, for the commissioners to support a Oregon broadband deployment program. And there's no real commitment other than citing authority of a, that we approve, that we agree, that we support the, the continued development of fiber broadband access in the county. So I, I have no objection to approving this. And I, like I said, I just completed it and wrote, you know, with Brad's, Commissioner Alcorn's signature, giving signature authority to, to the chair.
And I'll recuse myself. I'm on the board of Beacon Broadband, so.
So.
Unfrank of interest.
You want to read it?
Sure. Dear Director, on behalf of the Curry County Board of Commissioners, I'm writing this letter of support for the Beacon Broadband Fiber to Home for Oregon Rural South Coast Project. Curry County, the Curry County Board of Commissioners supports Beacon Broadband's effort to bring high and, high-speed internet service with where no one else will go. Beacon Broadband has committed to bring 21st century broadband services to more than 1,750 previously unserved and underserved broadband service locations throughout Curry County. Already they provide fiber broadband connectivity to more than 550 locations that previously had no real broadband service. Additionally, Beacon Broadband is committed to bringing service to all Coos-Curry Electrical Cooperation customers. Their, the ability to reach out and communicate, telehealth, access to educational opportunities, and remote work is critical to the, to the economy of the south, of South Coast. Beacon Broadband has proven it can build and support a fiber to the, support a fiber to the premises network. Beacon's commitment to investing in Oregon broad, Oregon's broadband infrastructure will promote economic growth, innovation, and development opportunities for rural communities in southwestern Oregon. As a local electro cooperative partner, Beacon, Beacon's partnership with the educational opportunities and job training will continue to make substantial contributions to our local economy, fostering a sense of progress and prosperity.
Ted, did we do that for the other providers?
They have not requested it.
Okay.
I would have no problems doing it for all the providers.
Yeah. And where does this go? Who does it go to?
It will go to the Oregon Broadband Deployment Program.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. That's, that's, that sounds good and that same offer is, is definitely open to the other providers as well. So, yeah, I, I support.
And I think it just takes a consensus, a consensus to, that we agree to?
Yeah.
Have the chair sign that we're in, so.
I can't consent.
Oh, you can't consent? So that's you and me?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. No further discussion on that, then we will move on to?
That was an old one. I just picked it up.
Okay. We'll move on to six, which is an update, Director of County Operations.
Okay. So I've, well, you've already seen some of the things we're working on that we voted on here, so I'll, I'll go, I'll gloss over those. I just wanted to let you know that we've got, Zach Moody is our, is the off-site planner that we've contracted with for the planning department and he's working on staff reports and things that, that need to be addressed and we're working on the backlog to get caught up with that. We're having some success. He's working a lot with Scott Fine, our surveyor, and we're talking about ways to improve services downstairs in the, in the planning department. Let's see. Fair update. Maintenance has been spending a fair amount of time at the fairgrounds addressing issues that had, have not been, that needed to be addressed in fairly small things, mostly leaking pipes and so forth. We did get metallurgists to come and take a look at the sport beams in, in the big arena and that was, I believe, day before yesterday? Yeah. Day before yesterday and the beams are, are in good shape. They're, they had been wrapped with, with drywall, so you couldn't really see them. So first, first thing Charles and company did was they went in, figured out a way to get all the drywall off, ripped, ripped all that off, exposed the beams. The drywall being wrapped on those beams, it sort of created a, an environment inside the drywall, which was, which was, could have been bad, but actually the lime in the drywall sort of seems to have preserved things a little bit.
Slowed the rust.
So what our plan there is to get in there and sandblast those beams in the near future and, and ospho them and then get them painted and treated. And also we're going up on the roof because inspection of that roof from, eyeball inspection looks like there may be some weak spots, but the only way you're gonna know is to get it, you gotta get up there and, and take a look at it. So Charles and Jeremy are going up there. We may just send Jeremy. I don't know.
It's a long ways down.
Yeah. We got a lift and so.
Okay.
Harness?
We got a lift and we got a safety harness and so they'll be, they'll be seeing what they can do with that and seeing if we can get, get the roof sealed up and maybe, we're trying to figure out the most economical way to get that building sealed up and presentable for the fair this year. So, and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, the outlook is good. Let's see. Road Department, I got contacted by Justin who works the road department and he would like to take the, I told him, I talked to you guys about this, he would like to take the lowboy in the float, in the, in the Azalea Parade this year and he'd like to take the D6 on it because the D6 was such a big part of dealing with all the snow communications emergencies this year. And I think that would be a good thing and I think I, I'd like to hear that the road department wants to get out there and, and engage with the county. So I said I'd ask you guys, but I would recommend that you approve it. So.
Yeah. We haven't had any participation in the parades outside of the juvenile department on the county behalf and, and some of the sheriff, sheriff patrol. So it'd be nice to have the road department represented as well.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
You don't need a motion, just a head nod.
No, I'll just, just head nod's good. I just wanted to run it by you.
Yeah.
And let's see. Airport road issue, we have completed the zone change on that and we are now gonna be working on leasing issues for that. And we're also, got some ideas about looking for funding for some of those houses that we'd like to build on that northern part. And so we're moving forward on that. Just wanted to give you an update there. And tomorrow we're having somebody from DLCD come down and give us a little training for the planning commission. Are we doing, so are we doing planning training as well or just planning commission?
Planning commission.
Okay. Just the planning commission training, but provided by DLCD. And so I think that's, that's pretty much what we have going right now. I can't think of anything off the top of my head that hasn't been discussed.
All right. So next is elected official updates. I don't see anyone.
It's amazing.
And we'll move on to commissioner updates. Commissioner Herzog, you are first.
So this kind of ties in what Ted was talking about. So the Port Orford Rotary wants to team up with Coos, or with Curry County to plant the trees when we do the burn, after we do, do the burn at the airport, that airport property, we burn all that slash. So they have a special, did he, did he ever get an email from them about a, you got a special forestry department with these young kids and they want to team up with us and partner with us and do that planting? So, and, you know, I talked to Ted and he said it's a good idea and they're gonna do the cedar and fir and that mix of what we all decided with and.
Yeah. They got a great rotary, active.
Yeah.
Very active up there.
Yep. They do.
That would tie in really well with the whole plan for that, that lower part. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. That'd be great.
That's it. Well, I, I'll add to that, you know, the, the positiveness for moving forward with our sheriff's levy and it's been a, it's been a week of meetings and I think more positive, if people stayed and to the very end, it was, we changed some minds and it's been a, it's been good. That's it, sir.
Mr. Tross?
It has been a, a good week of public interaction regarding the, the town halls and the levy. I will say that I want to thank everybody that helped put those on, helped set them up, Natasha and Rabia, Ted, Val, making sure the locations were ready. Also to the, you know, Port Orford City Council for allowing us to use their space in Port Orford and the Grange down south. You know, we're, there was a lot of questions. We are, you know, we're still continuing to try to get a lot of those questions answered up on our website for individuals. But overall, it was, it's been a really, really good experience. I'd still, you know, advocate for individuals who have questions or concerns or comments to reach out to us, get those, get those either heard or answered or both. And, you know, we just want to make sure everybody has all the information possible to make the best decision that they can make.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I, this will be the, this will be our, our last meeting before ballots go out.
Before they go out?
Before they go out. And so.
Our next meeting is the first of May. Yep.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. I think they actually go out on the first.
I believe that, I, I believe the information has been out there for people to be able to access and I hope that individuals are taking advantage of that. So that's, that's all I have.
All right. So I have a couple of things. First of all, regarding, regarding the, the town halls, the, I really like that town hall environment. I know in the past, a lot of town halls haven't been conducted, but I think it's a great way to communicate with the public and I'd, I'd really like to see more of those as we have community issues come up. And speaking of a community issue that came up last night in our town hall in South County was some of the issues surrounding Rainbow Rock and some of the vehicles that are parking there, some of the activity associated with those vehicles. And, and some of the folks showed up at the town hall last night expecting the town hall to be about that when it was actually about the levy, but there was still a very spirited conversation about that issue. And I just want to give a little bit of an update from a meeting we had earlier in the day. That meeting was attended by ODOT, by Brookings Police, our sheriff, our district attorney, OSP and?
State Parks.
State Parks. So we had a, we had a very lengthy discussion about some of the problem solving that can take place there. It was a very productive meeting. Our, our law enforcement professionals were, were very helpful and with ideas and ways to ensure public safety. So I think we were able to develop a, a good strategy and plan moving forward and I anticipate we'll see some results in the, in the coming days. So we are, that is, that is a work in progress and we are in fact working on that and, and will continue to do so. But it is a, definitely a priority with us and it's just a good partnership with ODOT and, and OSP. That is OSP's jurisdiction and, and, but, but we are definitely all working together. So the other, next update I have, and Matt, this is kind of a little bit, I'm hoping you can kind of cover this in your, in your article since we don't have a big public attendance here today, but I met with the Red Cross yesterday and had a really good meeting in preparation for obviously fire season coming up. And one of the things that we discussed was the number of volunteers the Red Cross has and they are, they are definitely actively seeking volunteers here in Curry County. So if anyone is interested in becoming a volunteer with the Red Cross, there's, there's a couple of ways to do it. You can go to their website and, and sign up that way. But also they've created kind of a new position, which is not as demanding on time and it's a, let me see what they called it. It's a, a general volunteer position and that's where you get some training and sheltering. You'll pass a background check and then you don't have to do all of the, all of the other training that is required, which is pretty extensive to be a standard Red Cross volunteer. It's a, it's an abbreviated version of that training. So if anyone's interested in that, you can contact our, our local Red Cross folks here or reach out to me and I'll put you in contact with, with the right people to get that done. But having more volunteers would be very helpful here in Curry County. And, you know, we, we saw last year, we had three active fires going all at the same time and the Red Cross plays a, a really big role and is a great partner in emergency management. So any volunteers that might be interested, man, we'd, we'd really love to have you. And the last thing I'll talk about is the levy and I just want the public, I want to remind the public that we do have a website. It's www.curycountylevy, one word, dot com. And one of the interesting things that came up in our workshop, or our town halls was some, well, several people had misinformation about their actual assessed value and had misinformation about what the cost would be per month for, for these folks. Their, their initial calculation was wrong. In fact, we had an elderly woman who mentioned that she wouldn't be able to pay, it was too expensive, she'd have to sell, she'd have to move. And then when she got with Rabia to calculate her cost, it was actually only $14 a month. So significantly different than what she had anticipated. So I would really encourage the public to go to the website. There's a phone number on the very top banner. Call that number and, and we will assist you in getting your actual cost and you'll know what it would be yearly, what it would be monthly, and we will break that down for you so you can make the most informed decision as you can about this upcoming levy. This levy is really a defining moment for this county in, in terms of how we proceed. We will do what the, what the people want, but I really want everybody to be educated so they're making the best decision. And then the other thing regarding the levy is we will be having an electronic town hall. We'll be putting out notices regarding that and that will be May 7th. And it will, right now it looks like it will be in the format of a webinar. So you'll be able to go to that electronically and, and we'll share some historical information, some. some information about our survey and then answer your questions about the levy. And that's all I have. Anything else, guys? All right, then it is, it is 4:52 and we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.